At 5:32, I will call the City of Alleghen City Council Special Meeting to order. And Tracy, could you please take a roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Westover.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Canales.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanson.
Present.
Mayor Perrigo.
I am here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next up on the agenda is public comment. If there is any public comment for tonight, please step forward and state your name and address. I am seeing none, so we'll move right along here. All right. So tonight, we are here to review applicants for our open city council seat. And thank you so much, everybody who submitted an application. And I just have a few things I want to say. So if you are not chosen, please, please, we always need volunteers. We need, we have right now one open seat on the Planning Commission. I believe that is the only commission or board that we have in opening right now. But fill out an application anyhow, they keep those, and, you know, we'll call you as, as seats open up. And then there's lots of volunteer opportunities for city-sponsored events as well. And also wanted to mention, for those of you that don't know, and it's something that when I first ran for council, I didn't know either, basically what is a council manager system? So the city council serves as the primary legislative body. So we're responsible for establishing policies, passing ordinances, making those budgetary decisions. And then as the city, our city manager, who is Joel Dieh, he is the acting like CEO of a company, for lack of a better term. So he's going to oversee the city staff, and he's going to implement those policies that council has set, and make sure that those policies are being met, the daily operations, all of that type of stuff. And I think you all know, the seat that is vacant, there is basically one year left of that term. So it would come up for reelection in November 2026. And so it's, I, I think this is a great opportunity, if you're interested in local government, to kind of get a taste of, of what it is, to be on council for that year. And then also wanted to mention, we meet twice a month, the second and the fourth Mondays of every month, besides when there's a special meeting, like tonight. And I think, looking at newer council members, because I was surprised when you first sit on council in November, it is a rush of special meetings, budgetary meetings, a lot, and so you don't realize it at first. So that's always a surprise. And then just wanted to mention, at the end of tonight, we will take a vote. And what we're doing is rank voting, and hopefully that was explained to everybody in the phone call that you received. So we are going to do a one through seven. Each of us has our own sheet, we're not going to do a majority, you know, have to have four people majority vote for somebody. It's going to be a ranking system of one through seven, with, you know, one of your first choice and on down, and then Tracy's going to do the tally, and, and that's how we will do that. And hopefully, whoever that person is, you're still here, and we'll swear you in tonight. And your first meeting is Monday at six o'clock. So, and what you will see is, what is today? Today is Tuesday. We receive our packets on Thursday, the prior Thursday to the meeting. So you will have the weekend to read through your packet and be prepared for that Monday meeting. So hopefully, that was a lot probably thrown at you, but please, anybody up here, we're available to answer any questions. So hopefully, this will be painless. Roger is up first, so Roger, would you like to come on up? Yeah, and, and we, and we, I mean, just, just by filling out an application, we know you guys love Alleghen and want to be a part of, of, you know, making Alleghen the best it can be. So the questions are pretty easy. Name one thing you think the City of Alleghen is doing well.
Boy, I think there's a lot of things that Alleghen's doing well. I think our downtown's thriving. I think we are making an inviting place for people to come and visit, and spend their money, and spend their time, and a place that they want to live and work in. Yeah, I think it's, I think there's a lot of great things happening here.
All right, thanks, Roger. Name one thing you think the City of Alleghen can do better.
Well, communication's always a thing that comes up, right? And we haven't come up with a good way to help that. The other thing I think we need, that we all know, is we need housing. We need more places for people to live, because it's a great city, and people want to live here.
Have you signed up for the, because I feel like this is a special meeting, we can kind of do this back and forth. Have you signed up for the text alerts?
No, I don't think I knew about the text alert.
Yes, there is, I've only gotten one so far, but you can sign up for text alerts as, about upcoming events and different things.
Do I do that on the site, what, city website?
I think, yeah, I think it's on the city website.
Cool.
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
I will do that.
Yes, so trying, something different.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think they should use it more than they do, but then everybody's like, well, we don't want them to, you know, unsubscribe. And I'm like, well, I subscribe, because I want to get stuff, so, but. And then the third question is, if you are not selected, are you willing to be on an advisory board?
Absolutely not. I'm already on the DDA and the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
But I, I'll serve Alleghen any way I can.
All right, thank you very much. That was, that was easy, and maybe we'll whip right through these questions.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it. We got like twenty.
I hold speak prepared.
Well, I mean, we have time. Would you like to share anything else, Roger? Those are all my questions I have for you.
I don't want to extend the evening. No, just that, I, I do, I love Alleghen, that's why I ran in the first place, and wanted to see it thrive and grow, and was actually honestly worried that there wouldn't be anyone to step in, or nobody, no qualified candidates to step in, and was delighted to see so many people step up and want to be a part of leading the city. And so, I mean, that's not a problem we've had in the past, so I think this is great. Whoever gets chosen, I'm sure will do a wonderful job.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, all right. Do we have to stick to the, if they're here? I always look at, I always look at Peter, because he's the, the, the rule guy.
No, it's, no, you don't. The agenda just has an estimated time, as I view it.
Okay.
If they're already here, I wouldn't delay just for agenda time.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Butzke. And probably as, as we go, I think of other things too, that I didn't know before I was on council, that I'd like to share with people. So the mayor and the mayor pro tem, we're not elected, we're just, we're one of seven people up here that were elected as a council member, and then every November, our group of peers nominates for the mayor and the mayor pro tem, and that's how this ends up. And so, just wanted to explain that to, how that, how that works.
Thank you.
All right, Greg, I feel like, I'm like, I'm sorry, I know like so many of you that, if I'm not using their, your proper Mr. Butzke. Name one thing you think the City of Alleghen is doing well.
I have to say that I really appreciate the infrastructure improvements. That has been just incredible to see it done. While it wasn't fun to go through it, it has made a big difference downtown.
All right. What's one thing you think the city could do better?
I'd like to see some way for the city to not only retain people that have been here, but also possibly bring people back. You know, it's, it's a wonderful community, and, you know, people that left ten or more years ago have no idea what it is now, and it would be great to get some of them back here, get them reestablished in the community. You know, and definitely people out there that are still here, but probably haven't given the downtown a chance. Since all these improvements have been made, they're really missing out. And it'd be nice to get ahold of some more of them. You know, there's, there's discourse online about it, about how there's not much here, but there's a lot here. There really is.
All right. If, and if you're not selected, would you be willing to serve on an advisory board?
Very possibly.
Okay. Yeah, and some of the boards we have, I don't know if everybody knows, we have the Airport Advisory Board, Planning Commission, DDA, we have Public Spaces, we have, yeah, Wellhead Protection, Positively Alleghen, and the Alleghen District Fire Board.
Yeah, but I'm sure I would be a part of one of those, or more, would just depend on schedule.
Okay.
So.
All right, great. Anything else you want to share?
Just, I guess in particular for tonight, I do have to get back, I've got golfers in the shop.
Oh, yeah.
So I need to get them situated, and, you know, if I need to come back, I think, I think you've got my number somewhere, so you could always call me. I'm not far away.
Yeah, right. All right, well, thank you.
I appreciate this.
Yeah, no, thank you. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Whichever one it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
The questions were, are you a registered elector of the City of Alleghen, registered to vote?
Yes.
And then, are you available to attend the meetings provided by the city?
Yes.
And are you available to meet attendance requirement of the position for which you're applying?
Yes.
In your form, you had an X, like right between the yes and no.
Gotcha.
It wasn't circled, I was like, is this yes or no?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
All right, it looks like Charles. If you don't mind going early.
No.
All right.
I'm flexible.
Yeah, well, thank you for your interest. All right. Name one thing you like about the City of Alleghen.
I think one of the things I like about it is not only the investment that the city made in the waterscape, and the boardwalk, and the streetscape. I think the fact that they've maintained that, there's a maintenance to this city that I think people overlook and don't appreciate, and it takes a, a group of people, and they're diligent in what they do, and I really, really appreciate that. I like that.
Thank you. What do you feel the City of Alleghen could do better?
The thing that I think is the easiest would be communication, and I'm not talking about text updates, I'm talking about some of the things that we plan on around seem to be marketed within the city. And it would be nice to bring some of those elements, some of those features of the city outward to the other people in the surrounding areas, and I'm not talking about Indiana. But I mean, let's see, go, and like what Greg was speaking to, to that nod, bring people back into the fold, and see just how beautiful the city is.
All right, so, yeah, I get it, so more than just to the residents of, yep. All right. Anything else you want to share? Well, first I should ask you, I think everybody's going to say yes, but I don't know. Are you willing to serve on any other advisory boards if you're not chosen?
Yeah, there are some that are more interesting than others, I guess.
Yeah, all right. All right, anything else you would like to share? This is your, your spotlight.
I mean, I, as a lot of you know, I was instrumental in bringing the Baron Fox yard down here. I chose it as, the city as the place for that business because of the infrastructure and the transparency of the government. That was the thing that impressed me the most. I really appreciate the, the downtown lowdown meetings, and just how easy it was to, and accessible to get to the city manager and the assistant city manager. That was breathtaking, because you don't get that in municipalities, you just don't. And that was something that I really appreciated here, and I chose this place as my residence and my business. And I want to serve it more.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We're going to just go right through these, and then we're going to have to stop. All right. Sandy, Sandra, sorry.
Either one.
Either one, all right.
The big chair, huh?
Yeah. All right, can you tell me one thing that you think the City of Alleghen is doing well?
All the new things that they've put in downtown and the streets, and I don't like the roundabout, but that's just me and my driving skills, so. I guess it has saved a lot of traffic jams.
What, what do you think the city could do better? One thing they could do better.
One thing that I think, because I'm older, and I've lived here forever, I wish they would have some kind of a taxi service where, like if you wanted to go out at night and have dinner, and you don't want to drive your car because it's snowing or something, they would have some kind of facility that you could depend on, that you could call, to take you and, and bring you home again. And that's something we don't have, I don't think.
Yeah, just the county has, yeah, the transportation.
The buses, you can't just call them, you have to schedule them a day ahead of time, and you don't, like, no, a day ahead of time, what about for dinner?
Mm-hmm.
You know, so.
If you are not selected, would you be willing to serve on one of the advisory boards?
If it was something that I could handle, yes, I would.
Okay, great. Anything else you would like to share with us?
No, not right now.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for your time.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good.
Good. Can you tell us one thing the City of Alleghen is doing well?
I think that the city does real well trying to bring new businesses into town. I think that has been a thing since, since Joel really arrived to the city. The new businesses that have come, obviously we've lost some, but I think the infrastructure has helped with that a lot. Yeah, I just really, they're always trying to bring things in and do new things, so I think that is really a great thing.
All right. What's one thing you think the city could do better?
Going back even when I was on council, just the, and I know it's a hard task all over, really, the country, is housing. We hear it everywhere we go, and I know it's not a task that just the city can handle, but I know that they have taken on an interim to try and help with that, and they work real close with the Alleghen County Community Foundation. So they do a lot of stuff to try and improve that housing, and I just hope they keep working at that.
And if you are not selected, are you willing to serve on an advisory board?
Of course. I'm on the Planning Commission now, and I've served on a couple of the other ones in the past, so certainly if there's a need, I would fill that position.
All right. Anything else you would like to share?
Not really, I've been, you know, I've been up in those spots, and I enjoy serving the city. It was fun. It was a hard time when I was mayor, we had a hard few months, but I did, was mayor also when we did the city, with our infrastructure, so that was very fun, to be a part of that. So I would enjoy doing it again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so any suggestions on what we would like to do now? Yeah, Matthew is here, so we could move. Okay. Matthew, we're going to go ahead and pull you up, if you don't mind. All right, same questions.
Same questions.
Yes.
I remember them.
All right.
Yeah, well, and as somebody who grew up here in the seventies and eighties, it's really nice to see that they're using the riverfront, because that was something that just did not happen when, when we were kids here. But I also like the fact that you're not just focusing on what people think of as the riverfront, which is, you know, the, the area with the fountains and the library, but you've got the boardwalk that wraps partway around and, and on the riverside over by, I guess it's the waste treatment plant. I still think it could be tied in with the old Mill District better, but that is the one thing that we've got to draw people to town. I mean, you know, we, we need something unique, something to draw people, and it's a good start, but I think, you know, it would be great to see more of that kind of stuff. As far as things that you could do better, I would really like to see a lot more public-private partnerships, maybe even city-county partnerships. Although I moved away in the nineties and just moved back last year, since 2013, I've been coming here every week, and I see the same empty buildings. And there are different ways that I used to do in a prior life, where you can work with developers and work with business owners as a city, or, or work with the county on the housing issue. I think there was a housing opportunity missed there with the county parking lot next to the, to the gas station, to do a county-city public-private partnership to build housing. So I guess I'd like to see the city make that next step. They got really good at drawing business in, but not really doing the partnerships to get those empty buildings to be active again.
If you are not chosen, are you willing to serve on an advisory board?
Sure, that's not a problem at all.
Okay. Anything else you would like to share?
No, I, I think, I mean, things have changed here so much since the 1980s, 1970s, when I was here. It's great to see all of those changes. I just think there's so much more potential that's not being tapped. And so I'm hoping that, coming with my background, I spent the last thirty years doing mergers and acquisitions, that I'd be able to, I don't know, infuse some new ideas and new blood.
All right, great, thank you so much. All right. All right, we're going to, our other, yeah, our other interviewee is Christopher Goodman. And we had allotted twenty minutes for everybody, and so we are way ahead of schedule, as you all can see. And Christopher, his time is at 7:10 PM, so we're going to go ahead and do our recess early, and we will re-adjourn at 7:00 PM. All right, thank you.
At six twenty-three, we will re-adjourn for the City of Alleghen City Council's special meeting. And next on the agenda is Chris Goodman. And Chris, it's gonna be easy-peasy.
Okay.
No pressure, and thank you for coming in early, earlier than your time. We just have three questions. Can you name one thing that you think the City of Alleghen is doing well?
The downtown development, I think, has fared out fairly well, other than it was a little bit off with the price. But downtown is just getting extremely more and more beautiful.
Mm-hmm. Great. And then one thing that you think the City of Alleghen could do better?
Drawing more people in. I know it's kind of vague, but...
No, that's good. And if you are not selected, would you be willing to serve on an advisory board?
Yes.
Okay, alrighty. Anything else you... those are the three questions we have for you. I know the applications everybody filled out were pretty extensive, so a lot of information that all of you shared through that. Is there anything else you would like to share tonight?
No, just if you guys had any members as the council with what I put in my application, I'm more than willing to explain a little bit more.
Anybody? All right, thank you so much. All right, so since we have come back from a link recess, I am not going to do another one, but I would... So moving down to agenda item number six is discuss and vote. So I don't know if it was explained to everybody in the phone call that you might have received. We are going to do rank voting, so one through seven. Each of us has an interview sheet in front of us with everybody's name, and we will each do rank voting, which we will then give to Tracy to compile those, and then we will go from there. So we will take a few minutes, and then when you're done, if you just want to pass it over, please. It's gonna be all right.
That was in my head.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Where's Ryan? He should have it. That's true.
I feel like we need music or something. I feel like we need the Jeopardy song or something.
That's what we were...
Oh, is that what you were just saying? It's like awkward silence. And I feel like I'm in school, I'm trying not to look either.
I was cheating.
Yeah. It's... okay, can you wait? I don't want... I say Tracy has the tallies.
So the person with the lowest tallies was Charles Clark. So...
That means low is good.
Low is good.
Low is good.
Low is good, so you got most...
So you have been appointed to the vacant city council seat.
Oh, okay.
And we will swear you in tonight. All right. If you want to come on up? And congratulations.
I'll meet you at the microphone over here.
One moment, we're checking to see if we need to make a motion.
I think so.
For Chris's appointment, we'd have to vote on it.
Yep, okay. All right, so the tallies have been totaled, and Charles Clark II, I want to make sure I get your full name, has been the appointee for tonight, but we need to make the motion to appoint Charles to the vacant city council seat with term... Do I have to make the motion? Sorry. He's the guy. Sorry. We made you hurry up for nothing. Okay. Okay. All right, I'm going to make the motion to appoint Charles Clark II to the vacant city council seat. Can I have a support? Support. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, now we can swear you in.
I couldn't read that earlier, I should have read it earlier.
Do you think we need to get closer to the microphone? Raise your hand. I, Charles Clark II,
I, Charles Clark II,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of this state
and the Constitution of the state of Michigan
and will faithfully and truly perform my duties
and will faithfully and truly perform my duties
of the... of city council member
of city council member
to the best of my ability for a term of one year
to the best of my ability for one year
set to expire in November 2026
set to expire in November of 2026
so help me God
so help me God
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just needed a sign there.
Sorry for the ad lib, but I wanted it more... More accurate. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
If you want to come up and sit down, you can be up here.
You're the new guy, it's gonna be a broken scene.
I just want to thank everybody that took the time, it just shows that you care. Now we know all of your bases are here, you're going to be from public opinion, and I love your comments, so keep coming. And Chris, now I have a face to make, and hope to see you at more meetings than other... All right, and at six thirty-six, I will turn me in. Thank you.